Good evening, welcome to the City Council meeting of Wednesday, November 2nd, 2016. Can I have the roll call, please?
Dan Carey.
President.
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no approval of minutes today, so if anyone here from the public would like to address the council on something other than on public hearings, please step to the podium. You'll do it later? Communications, sure. Okay. Okay. Communications from all listed officials, boards, committees. Counselor Kuzinski, I think you had at least a couple of things, one or two things.
Yeah, a couple of things. Just, Election Day is proceeding now and is coming up on Tuesday, the 8th. Anytime between now and the 8th, is there some time periods? No.
Tomorrow, tomorrow, 8 to 5, Friday, 8 to noon.
Tomorrow, 8 to 5, that's the Thursday, the 3rd, 8 to 5, and Friday.
8 to noon.
8 to noon. And then Election Day, November 8th. The hours?
7:00 AM, 8:00 PM.
7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I'd like to just speak for a moment about question two. As you may know, the East Hampton City Council passed a resolution encouraging folks to vote "no" on question two. And the School Committee of East Hampton also did, along with 206 other local school committees across the Commonwealth. I'll be voting "no" on question two, and I wanted just to share my reasons for that. While some charter schools have produced excellent results, so have most district schools produced the excellent results. I believe the state and local officials should focus on improving the schools which by law must serve all of our students. That's the 96% who attend traditional schools. Until the funding mechanism is changed, so that each student who attends a chartered school does not take dollars away from the traditional public schools, in the past year we're losing $400 million across the Commonwealth, that must stop. What does this mean for East Hampton residents? If no one has a child in school? Well, if you don't have a child in either a public school or a charter school, maybe it doesn't, you don't think it means anything. But it means that the child takes the money from the traditional public school, but the costs remain with the school. Fewer electives can be offered, fewer art and music programs, libraries get cut, supplies get cut. Eventually, the system starts to crumble, and we're not able to provide for those 96%. Eventually, the schools, I believe, will turn to the communities and request an override, not to make their schools better or the best in the country, but to stop the walls from crumbling. But by then it may be too late. East Hampton, I believe, has worked hard to improve public schools and your public education experience. Voting "no" will help keep quality in local public education for the 96% who attend district schools. Please, vote "no" on question two. On another matter? On November 15th, the Planning Board will be talking and entertaining a proposal from Cumberland Farms to place a building on Route 10, I believe, near the East Hampton Savings Bank, in that range of Route 10. And Cumberland Farms, I believe, will be proposing a gasoline station at that location. I'm told that the, it will look somewhat like the location at North Road and Route 10 in Westfield, if you're familiar and go that way. But I just wanted to be sure everyone in the district knew and the folks in the city. In some ways, I think it gives us an opportunity, that if we do have a new gas station in town, I would love to see a generator on site to assure that the public, if the power grid is down, is able to get gasoline. I'll be making that proposal to the Planning Board. If anyone else has any other thoughts on the subject, please attend that meeting November 15th.
Thank you, Counsel. Anyone else? Counselor Hayes?
Eastworks Open Studio is this Saturday from 10 to 5. Everybody is invited to attend and tromp all over the place. There will be tours, and all the studios will be open, and then there'll also be some food trucks, I think, as well. So, please come.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments or questions? Okay. Communications, Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind people that Veterans Day, Friday, November 11th, the East Hampton Veterans Council will hold their annual ceremony. It is going to begin at 10:00 AM at the American Legion Post 224 in East Hampton.
Okay. Thank you. American Communications, nothing today? Okay. Moving on to standing committees. Finance, Counsel Rist.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item that did not require a public hearing to bring forward. The Finance Committee voted to approve the establishment of a donation account, which was requested by the mayor and the finance director. This donation account allows for donations that are nonspecific to, for instance, a specific item that we already have donation accounts for. If someone donated funds and did not want them to be used for operational expenses, i.e. somebody's salary, there was no place to put this money except in the general fund. Someone had wanted to donate funds to, just give them to the city, but wanted to support an event, a parade or something we've been doing in the past, but there's no place for that money. So this is purely an accounting measure to make sure there's a place for that money. And of course, the City Council will always be notified of any use of funding from any donation account. So if there's no questions, I'd like to move that we approve this establishment, and I'll do so in the form of a motion to approve the donation account as proposed by the mayor.
So moved. Can we read it like this?
Someone wants you to read it.
Yeah.
Okay. I move to approve the establishment of donation account pursuant to the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Approval is hereby given to establish an account to receive donations for the following: For the purpose of funding community needs and events executed on the 13th day of October 2016, signed by the mayor.
It's a second. Okay. Motion second. Any questions, discussions on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Continuing. We will meet again on November 9th. Our next Finance Committee meeting will be in Room 1 at 5 o'clock. At that time, we'll be discussing other items on the agenda. I would like to also do new business, Mr. President, if that's allowed.
Yes.
And for a first reading, I'd like to read a supplemental appropriation request hereby made for the following appropriation. The amount is $100,000 to be appropriated from the free cash, $100,000, to be appropriated to the OPEB stabilization account, $100,000, to transfer funds into the OPEB stabilization account. Second reading is a supplemental appropriation request. The amount requested is $356,536.50 to be appropriated to the CPA Historic Preservation Account, $12,774, I'm sorry, to be appropriated from the CPA Historic Preservation Account, $12,774, the CPA Reserve Fund, $154,212, and the CPA Undesignated Fund, $189,550.50, for a total of $356,536.50, to be appropriated to the City Clerk Vital Records Preservation and Restoration, $12,774, and the Cook County Road Drinking Water Supply and Open Space Protection Project, $343,762.50. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose: to provide funds to the City Clerk Vital Records Preservation and Restoration Project and the Cook County Road Drinking Water Supply and Open Space Protection Project. Mr. President, I move that these two appropriations be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Second.
Motion second to move the two supplemental appropriations to Finance, additional discussion. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
I also further move, Mr. President, that the aforementioned appropriation request be set for public hearing at our next regularly scheduled City Council meeting.
Is there a second?
Both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Second. Motion second to schedule a public hearing for November 16, 6:15 PM in these chambers for the supplemental appropriations of the $100,000 and the $356,536.50. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
I believe, except for public hearings, that, oh wait, no, no. Yes, that concludes. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think we can get public safety. Counselor Hayes?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are moving forward with the Mobileite Coal Location Cell Tower request on Liberty Street. Our next task was to send, we wanted to send them a list of our questions prior to setting up the appointment. We have done that, and then our next move is to send them a list of open appointments, which we just figured out tonight. So we will take care of that email. And then I would like to try and meet with the Subcommittee prior to us meeting with the Mobileite. There's been some new information that needs to be discussed in a public meeting. And then, ongoing is the request to allow on-street parking on a section of Pleasant Street, and we're still working on the language for that. And I am trying desperately to get in touch with the Pleasant Street Variety owner, but she doesn't seem to be in, and I keep leaving my name and talking, but I'm really uncomfortable with, like, making a move on Pleasant Street without speaking to that business owner. So I shall try some more.
Okay. And that concludes?
Thus concludes.
Probably squeeze in appointments. Counselor Smith?
Okay. The City Council Appointment Subcommittee met earlier tonight at 5:15, and we had a number of mayoral appointments to discuss as a group. And so we have quite a few. I'm going to split these into four groups. All of these were approved by the Subcommittee as two to zero. So the first group of names that I'm going to bring forward for consideration from the full City Council, all have a term expiration of 12/31/19, and these are all, these are all committee members that have already been appointed, and this will be their second term. So I move to move the following candidates to the full council for consideration for their board or committee role. First one is Catherine Kroll with the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership, with a term expiration of 12/31/19. All of the following will have the same term expiration. Jana Tetrel for the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership, Chester Seklecki for the Aqua Fur Protection Committee, David Zagorski for the Board of Assessors, Paul Duda for the Board of Public Works, Audrey Brown for the Council on Aging, Estelle Stas for the Council on Aging, Beverly Wadika for the Historical Commission, Wendy Hammerell for the Manhan Rail Trail Committee, Stephen Donnelly for the Manhan Rail Committee, Beth Tiffany for the National Economic Pond Committee, Liz Provo for the National Economic Pond Committee, Marge Prendergast for the PLA E Board of Directors, Chester Seklecki for the Planning Board, Anthony Corella for the Plumbing and Gas Inspector, Brian Fink for the Registrar of Voters, and Frank Picard for the Veterans Council. And again, these all have a term expiration of 12/31/19.
I didn't notice you skipped over Andy Hunter, just because it's very easy to do, but, so.
Oh, oh, sorry. And Andy Hunter for Parks and Recreation.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion of second to accept those mayoral appointments with expiration date of 12/31/2019. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion pass. I want to abstain.
I'm abstaining from Beth Tiffany. She's my first cousin.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have John Fitzgibbon for the City Attorney, and that's a term expiration of 12/31/17. So I'd like to make a motion to have his name accepted by the full committee for consideration.
Second.
Okay. A motion of second to John Fitzgibbon to City Attorney, expiration date 12/31/2017. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
Okay. Next is Megan Murphy for the ECA Plus Grants Committee with a term expiration of 8/9/2019.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion of second to approve Megan Murphy, TCA Committee, expiration 8/9/2019. Additional questions or comments?
I just wanted to make the comment that Megan is new to the committee, so that's why she wasn't put in the first batch. She's not a reappointment.
She is a reappointment, but the term expiration is on August 9th.
Oh, the term of expiration is August 9th. Oh, August. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay. So there's a motion of second. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
And the next one is for John Sheehan for Parks and Recreation with a term expiration of 12/31/17.
Second.
Motion second for John Sheehan, Parks and Rec, a little bit different, 12/31/2017. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
And Sean Casey is, sorry, Sean Casey has been appointed for the ECA Plus Grants Committee. He's the only person on this list that is a new appointee. He's already part of the artist community within East Hampton and has been working with ECA Plus, and this would expand his position to an appointed committee position. So I'll bring his name forward next.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion of second to approve Sean Casey. Additional questions or comments? Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
And the last one I have for approval, for consideration from the full City Council, is Greg Rowland for the CPA Committee, and this is a City Council President reappointment with a term expiration of 12/31/19.
Second.
Okay. Motion second to approve Greg Rowland, CPA, 12/31/19. Counselor Rist?
As the CPA Committee Chairman, I must tell you that Greg has been absolutely exceptional in his diligence with the committee. He does his homework, and, Mr. President, you've made a great appointment once again. I think this is something I'm very happy. All of these appointees are volunteering to serve our city, and I thank them. And Greg is very welcome on our committee.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
Mr. President, I move that public hearings be open.
Second.
Okay. A motion second to approve open public hearings. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Public hearings are open. Counselor Rist?
First on the agenda is our tax classification. This is common. We do this every year, and to be honest, I don't think it has changed in many years. The Board of Assessors, in a letter to us, with all of them approving, have approved a single tax rate for all classes of property, no open space discount, no residential exemption, and no small commercial exemption. If you'll notice, in your, each of those different items have been defined for you. Also given to us is the total value of property. It's over a billion dollars. That's pretty cool. I don't know, I just saw that. The, our assessor is here today, and one of our members of the Board of Assessors, if you have any questions. We always debate whether or not we want a business tax rate, and as explained quite eloquently by both Lori and Peter, the use of a business tax rate would be counterproductive and would not really provide us with any additional revenue and actually would turn businesses away from the community. So we've never, as long as I've been on the council, thought of a business tax rate. And as you can see, our residential percentage is 86, 87%, so not a lot that we would gain by that. If you have any questions, they are here to answer your questions.
Before I, does anyone have questions for them to call up, or if not, then I'll just, we'll just proceed? Okay. I guess not then. Anyone from the public would like to address the council on this appropriation, I mean, this classification? You know, Counsel Rist?
Thank you both. I move that the City Council accept the East Hampton Board of Assessors' recommendation for tax classifications for fiscal year 2017 with the following provisions: a single tax rate for all classes of property, no open space discount, no residential exemption, and no small commercial exemption.
Second.
Okay. Motion of second to accept the 2017 tax classification. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. President, we have a request from the Police Department for a repeater, which I was fond at the committee to mention that I knew what it was. It actually is an amplifier, if I might, which amplifies radio signals that each officer wears through our main station so that the entire city of East Hampton, which is fairly large geographic area, allows officer-to-officer communication. Before I really, they have now one old 42-year-old backup and a 10-year-old unit. They need a new one, because the 42-year-old backup simply isn't capable of doing its job anymore. And the new one, although refurbished, we were promised has a 10, is $10,000 cheaper, and parts are certainly available for the new one we're going to get. And I'll allow, I'll ask Chief Alberti, and I want to tell you.
Captain Alberti.
No. He is temporarily appointed, so I think it's appropriate to say chief, and I thank you. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you've done for me and my family. And I want to thank you for staying in East Hampton when the FBI and the DEA could have snatched you at any moment. Thank you, and this counselor certainly thanks the mayor for appointing you.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
All right. So now you have to do your job.
Good evening. Robert Alberti, police captain, acting police chief for the city of East Hampton.
I'll give him that.
We're seeking $10,565 to replace a backup repeater. Some of the paragraphs that I wrote for this request no longer apply, because as of Saturday, our backup repeater went completely dead.
Wow.
So it wasn't in regulations with FCC, and it was intermittent at best, and it was 42 years old, but now it is no longer. So now we are running without a backup repeater, which creates a problem for us if our main repeater goes down, which sometimes it does. The October storm was a good example of that. We lost our main repeater, and we lost a backup one. We wound up going on the Mount Tom Wimlac Channel, which is Western Mass Law Enforcement Channel, which we can communicate through all of Western Mass. The problem with that is everybody else is also communicating on it, and so we may be dealing with an issue here in East Hampton, but somebody in Pittsfield is listening to us as we go on and on and on. So usually our conversations on Wimlac are very brief, therefore, either pursuit going to another district or mutual aid for another district, very brief, very, very simple. So on the, for the October storm, both repeaters went down. I actually had officers, including myself, traversing the mountain with cars trapped and wires down, and we lost communication with dispatch, which was a huge, huge issue. Fortunately, we had the wherewithal to quickly jump on Wimlac Channel, but we really needed our own backup. To that end, the backup repeater will allow us to have a secondary channel that we can communicate throughout the whole city, so we could be doing either details, covert operations with the Detective Bureau, and have citywide communication to include dispatch. Right now, it's just radio to radio on, like, a detail or a covert operation within a Detective Bureau. So if they start drifting apart from one another, from one end of the street to another, they will lose communication. The backup repeater will allow citywide communication on this other channel. I brought my radio expert here, Officer Ed Murray, in for questions, because he's the, he'll have the nuts and bolts of it. I can give you a brief overview of my knowledge of it, but I'm certainly not the expert in it.
Any councils have questions for either the chief? Counselor Derby?
I'm just curious, so this repeater is as old as I am, so I'm a little sad that it's dying already. But, you know, it seems like this technology is, might be dated. Is there, is there, is this something that you foresee, you know, having wherewithal to stick around for an extended period of time? Or is there going to be a transition to a new technology, or?
The repeater, the repeater technology is going nowhere. That's, that is here to stay. It's just the amplification of the radio signals. Where it's going to is it's going towards digital communications and more encrypted stuff with the digital and the P25 Apco certifications. But those, when you start talking into those, you're talking $25,000, $30,000, $40,000 for a basic system. We don't need that.
No.
This town is way too small for that. That's for places like Springfield, Worcester, Boston, who are all switching over to this P25. That's why we can get this stuff refurbished and cheap, because these guys all had this stuff sitting in their radio rooms, and now they're pulling it all out. They refurbish it, and they sell it to us at a very reduced rate.
They owe you the money.
Yes. Because even, like, the repeater we're looking at is the MTR 2000, and the total price with new antenna cabling and everything is in the $10,000 range. If we were to go to the MTR 3000, which is the newest current model, now you're jumping that price with cabling and antennating up into the $20,000 range. So the repeater technology is changing dramatically, but the actual use of a repeater is not going anywhere.
Okay. Any additional questions for either officer?
How old is the, I'm sorry. How old is the one we're purchasing?
The one we're purchasing, I don't have the actual year of manufacturing, but it's within the past five or six years that the MTR 2000s came out. They got theirs about four years ago, and schools picked one up two years ago, I think?
Yeah, so two to four years.
Yeah. So it's not that old of a piece of equipment.
It's the exact same piece of equipment that the fire department currently uses.
And as well as the highway, the DPW, and the schools. It's all the same equipment.
Okay. Counselor Kuzinski?
Just a quick question. Does that repeater enable you to communicate not only with police officers, but the DPW and the fire department also?
No, it does not, because what happens is with radio communications, you have what's called UHF, ultra-high frequencies, and VHF, which is very high frequencies. They run on different platforms, so one platform cannot talk to the other.
But this does give you the backup you need for all police systems.
Correct. If either of these repeaters go down, we still have the second repeater to go right over to, and it's seamless.
Excellent. Other, any additional questions? Counsel Rist?
Taking Counsel Kuzinski's question a little further, and it's an excellent question. You simply call dispatch, who has complete communication with any other service. So if you need fire or DPW service, water service.
That's correct. We can go right through that.
It's very fast. I mean, it's not like we're losing a step if we.
No, it's the dispatcher basically talking to, talking to my officers or our officers, and then moving their finger to the next button and talking to DPW or fire.
But that's a good point.
Any additional questions or comments, officers? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If anyone from the public would like to address the council on this appropriation, please come to the podium and state your name. Good on saying. Counselor Rist?
I move that the following supplemental appropriation request be approved by the City Council. The amount requested is $10,565. It is being appropriated from free cash. To be appropriated to, Capitol Police repeater package, $10,565, for the purpose of providing funds to replace a 42-year-old repeater that is no longer operational.
Second. A motion of second to approve the supplemental appropriation of $10,565. Additional questions or comments? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
The last item on the agenda is one that I really like doing, and that's saving money from our free cash account. We've been requested to put $750,000 of free cash into two general stabiliz, two stabilization accounts. And I must say, we've been doing this for a few years, and the fact that we have a lot of free cash is really a testament to the financial stability and financial management of our Finance Director and our mayor and the entire Finance Department, and the fact that our departments don't just spend money. A lot of free cash is returned funds from budgets that aren't used, so it can be used. It allows us to save money. It allows us to provide capital equipment that we've been spending, like a repeater. And I think that's wonderful because without it, we would not have the ability to do... I remember a few years ago, and I think some of the councilors were here, where we had trouble getting police cruisers, and we had to wait until we had some free cash or ability to do that. The capital stabilization account, in fact, provides a buffer in case we don't have enough free cash for a major expense, such as suddenly we need a new fire truck or something. So the Finance Committee happily approved this request. The mayor and the finance director here, if you have any questions. It's rather straightforward.
Do either mayor, finance director want to make comments on this? No? Okay.
Additional... Counselor Kozinski, I just wanted to reiterate what Counselor Rist had said, the mayor, the finance director, but the department heads and the folks in the departments are not making the requests and the demands to spend money because there's some money happens to be in the account. That's not what local government really is about. It's about spending what's needed in an appropriate fashion to maximize services to the public. We're doing that here in East Hampton. I'm very proud of that. I wish that would happen on every level of government, and we'd never hear the stories of, geez, the money's there, let's spend it. We turn it back in at the end of the year, and it goes into free cash, and we can put it back into stabilization to make East Hampton stronger. Thank you very much to each member.
Mayor? Gotcha.
Thank you for your kind thoughts and words. So what this is exactly, what you're looking at is obviously we've... I've established a capital stabilization plan, and also we have the general stabilization plan. So a lot of you councilors will remember, typically, when I do the capital program every year, we had maybe thirteen million dollars' worth of capital requests, and there were years where we were able to honor none. So what this is, is this is actually just saving for the future so that we make sure things like that don't happen again. When I took office, we had... Our fleet schedule was pretty scary, and we weren't able to... Due to the cuts that we've had over the years, weren't able to meet, in some years, none of our capital requests. So this is an insurance that we will, and that's why I created the capital stabilization plan. And as you can see, as soon as free cash was certified, we sent a good list of transfers to the council for the approval, for funding approvals that I put through. So this is what it is, and it's just to ensure that in the future... And also, you never know what's coming our way. We always prepare for nine C cuts, so, you know, building these up like this is just the way that we need it to be.
Great. Thank you. You finish with your...
Yeah, I have to move it forward.
I know. I want to... Anyone from the public want to come on that appropriation? No? Okay. Counselor Rist?
Yes, Mr. President. I will move that the council approve the supplemental appropriation request. The amount requested is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be appropriated from free cash, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to be appropriated to General Stabilization eighty-four account, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Capital Stabilization Account eighty-five, five hundred thousand dollars, for a total of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The amount would be requested for the following purpose: to transfer funds into General Stabilization and Capital Stabilization.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion second to approve the supplemental appropriation of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash into the General Stabilization Funds. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
Mr. President, I move the public hearings be closed.
Second.
Second. Motion second to close public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Like, we'll just see. I guess we'll come back to new business later for Counselor Smith, but in the meantime... Oh, you're not done with your report either. So I want to go back to appointments. Counselor Smith?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry if I interrupted you.
That's fine. I had gotten through all of the Merrill and City Council President appointments, so that part is done, and all I have left is new business?
Right.
Did I just hear you say you wanted to wait till the end?
No.